Good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting of September 15, 2025. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask that you all rise for the singing of our national anthem. Well, thank you to our very own Tenille Towns for the singing of our national anthem and the Grand Prairie, City Grand Prairie Marketing Department for the images. I would now like to take the opportunity to read our land acknowledgement. The city respectfully acknowledges the Métis, Cree, Beaver, and Dene people as the original caretakers of these lands and surrounding areas. We are grateful to live, learn, work, and play on Treaty 8 territory within Turtle Island and acknowledge that these lands have been home to diverse and sovereign First Nations and Inuit nations since time immemorial. Moving on, not a big agenda tonight, but definitely some work here. The first one being the public hearing, item number four on your agenda, Land Use Bylaw And I will turn this one over to Ms. Patel for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Administration is proposing amendments to the Central Commercial District in the Land Use Bylaw. There are only two types of residential uses currently allowed in the CC District, apartment buildings and mixed-use apartment buildings. The Land Use Bylaw currently requires apartment buildings to have a minimum of 24 units. If a developer wishes to construct a building with fewer units, they must incorporate a mixed-use component with a minimum of two residential units, which falls under discretionary use. There is no existing provision in the CC District that allows for smaller residential development. The proposed amendment is prompted by recent inquiries about the need for development flexibility in the certain parts of the Central Commercial District. On August 19, Operational Services Committee directed administration to bring forward an amendment to the Land Use Bylaw to amend the CC District to allow residential development with fewer than 24 units to the council for consideration. The current requirement for a minimum of 24 units for apartment buildings in the CC District can be seen as restrictive, particularly when considering the diapols parts of the downtown districts. The proposed amendment to the CC District will modify apartment buildings as a permitted use to have a minimum of 12 units instead of 24. Reducing the minimum threshold from 24 to 12 expands housing choice by making midsize apartment developments easier to approve. The proposed amendment will also add multi-attached dwelling and apartment buildings up to 11 units as discretionary uses. Please note, multi-attached dwelling by the definition in the Land Use Bylaw must have a minimum of three units. The proposed amendment will add a special section that establishes clear criteria for development authority to review multi-attached dwellings and apartment buildings up to 11 units on case-by-case basis based on site-specific factors. Classifying the use as discretionary allows the development authority to ensure its appropriateness and prevent unsuitable applications. Special criteria to evaluate multi-attached dwelling and apartment buildings up to 11 units include: the proximity of the proposed development to the core and the fringe areas of the CC District; apartment buildings up to 11 units and multi-attached dwellings are prohibited on lots fronting 100 Avenue between 102 Street and 98 Street; introducing site standards for smaller apartment buildings to ensure that the developments are appropriately scaled and compatible with the surrounding areas; promoting active pedestrian-friendly facades and discouraging blank walls to enhance the public realm; encouraging design features such as architectural elements, quality materials, and overall site planning considerations to create visually appealing high-quality developments. The proposed development was, proposed amendment was circulated to internal departments and external agencies, including the Downtown Association and UDI Grand Prairie, and no concerns were received. Based on this background and analysis, administration recommends that council give three readings to Bylaw C-1260-203 being an amendment to the Land Use Bylaw. Thank you.
Perfect. Thanks for that introduction. I would now look to council for any questions for administration. Counselor Platt.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'm just, I just want to confirm on the discretionary use to go down to a smaller use. What would be the amount of, I guess, canvassing we do in that area to make sure that the homeowners is, is it, or the businesses around that are okay with it? Is it a certain perimeter still within that core or are so many doors down? How does a discretionary side work?
Ms. Patel.
Thank you through mayor. We, when we receive an application, we circulate the applications to the 60-meter radius of the subject, subject property.
Okay, well, that's great. Thank you.
I see no one else in the queue. I had one question for you. I think 12 is a good number, but I'm curious of how you came up with 12. What was the sort of catalyst for 12? Why not eight? Why not 14? Tell me what, why 12?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton, for the question. Based on the different lot sizes in the downtown, it was collectively agreed upon in the administration that 12 unit is an achievable midsize apartment building, and that was our goal with this amendment, that a midsize apartment building can be achieved in our downtown core.
And so with that, did we had, did we have conversations, consultation with industry if that's a number that they thought made sense? Obviously, multifamily buildings aren't inexpensive to build, so the business case needs to make sense on that building. So was there consultation or conversations with any individuals or proponent that may build that size of facility?
We did circulate the proposed amendment to the UDI, and we did not receive any concerns or negative comments on our proposed amendments.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any other questions from council? Seeing none, I'll now go to the presentation and submission portion of the public hearing, and I will ask if there's anyone here or online to speak in support of this Land Use Bylaw, Land Use Bylaw Amendment. I see no one moving. If you are online, please let me know. I'll just check with Jessica that we don't have anybody online. Okay, so I'll ask a second time if there's anyone here to speak in support of Land Use Bylaw Amendment C-1260-203, and a third time to see if there's anyone here to speak in support of this Land Use Bylaw Amendment. Seeing no one, I'll now ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition of this Land Use Bylaw Amendment, and I'll recognize Counselor Blackmore. You jumped in the queue as I was asking. I will ask if there's a second time if there's anyone here or online to speak in opposition of Land Use Bylaw Amendment C-1260-203, and a third time to see if there's anyone here or online to speak in opposition to this Land Use Bylaw Amendment. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, look to business arising, recognizing Counselor Blackmore.
Well, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council give first reading to Bylaw C-1260-203 being an amendment to the Land Use Bylaw.
Thank you. That motion is in order. There is no discussion or debate on first reading, so I'll call the question.
Counselor Thiessen in favor.
That carries unanimously. Counselor Blackmore.
I would move second reading for Bylaw C-1260-203, and in speaking to this, this change to the Land Use Bylaw is coming forward because we recognize that we have vacant land in the downtown, that we would like to see some residential properties built on, and recognize that our previous, well, actually, our current bylaw standards are perhaps a little bit too confining to really allow development to take place that is suitable for the land that is being developed on. So I would ask council to support this motion to make this change.
Thanks for that. That motion is in order. Opportunity for questions for administration or discussion, debate. Seeing no one, I'll call the question. Please vote.
Counselor Thiessen in favor.
Counselor O'Toole in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Counselor Blackmore.
I would move that we have third reading of this bylaw at this meeting.
Thank you for that motion. That motion is in order, and in order for us to have third reading here tonight, this must pass unanimously. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question.
Counselor Thiessen in favor.
Counselor O'Toole in favor.
And that does pass unanimously. Counselor Blackmore.
I would move third reading of Bylaw C-1260-203 being an amendment to the Land Use Bylaw.
Thank you for that motion. That motion is in order. I see no one in the queue, so I'll call the question. Please vote.
Counselor Thiessen in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Moving on to item number five on today's agenda under reports, the first one being item 5.1, Policy 120, the City Manager Performance Management. And I'll give Ms. Chamberlain a moment to get set up, and once you're ready, I'll turn it over to you.
Hello. I sit in front of you guys once a year, and here we are. For those of you that don't know me, I am Chief Human Resources Officer Bobby Chamberlain, and I'm here to present on Council Policy 120, City Manager Performance Review. Assuming we've read the administrative report, I am looking to draw your attention really to five items that I wish to ensure that those eyes are on. We've combined both the policy and the procedure for ease of review and approval for council. Number two, we've included language on succession planning for both the city manager and senior leaders within the organization to ensure business continuity. We've provided a clear schedule on annual review evaluators and the mechanism for that evaluation. We've provided, number four, we've provided clear role of accountability for the CHRO is the custodian of this process. And number five, we've identified the timing of the processes moved forward, recognizing council break in August and the election cycles that occur every four years. Other changes are simply there for clarity and consistency. Our recommendation continues to be approval of Policy 120 as presented, and if approved, repeal Procedure 120-1, City Manager Performance Review. I'll take any questions.
Perfect. Thanks for your introduction. Before I go to council with potentially any questions, I just wanted to thank you for your support. This was a very lengthy process as previously, it, the policy wasn't as strong, council had a lot of input on this, and I would say that we're in a much better place right now in, in regards to next councils having the documentation and the, the process aligned to suit their needs and the timing that work well for not only the chief human resources officer, but the CEO and, and mayor and council's schedules. So a lot of work was into this, and I wanted to thank you for your time. Counselor Thiessen.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Yes, I too wanted to chime in and express my gratitude to you and to the team of counselors that Mayor Clayton put together in building this from the ground up. Ms. Chamberlain, Counselor Bressi, Counselor Blackmore, and Mayor Clayton, the four of you built something that we can use, councils perpetually can use going forward, whereas before we really had nothing. It was really, fell on the mayor, it was incumbent on the mayor to talk with council and then to determine how the CEO was, his performance or her performance was evaluated, and move forward from there. But this structure and this process was, was really, really good. And I also want to thank you for giving us that extra time to do it as well. We have busy lives, and I know this took a lot of work, and it was great because once I sat down to do it myself personally, it was quick and easy, and it was easy to evaluate the performance of our CEO. So thank you to all our members on council, and especially to you, Ms. Chamberlain, for helping to build this for us.
Great. So I see no one else in the queue with questions. I'll look to somebody for business arising, recognizing Counselor O'Toole.
I feel lucky. It's like a lottery every time I tap in, so. I, I move that council approve the amendments to Policy 120, and that's the City Manager Performance Management as presented, as well as repeal Procedure 120-1, City Manager Performance Management Process.
Perfect. Thank you for that. That motion is in order. Opportunity for discussion or debate. Seeing none, I'll call the question.
Counselor Thiessen in favor.
O'Toole also in favor.
Bressi in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Chamberlain.
Thank you.
I'm moving on to report number 5.2, the East Link Center Lazy River Liner Replacement. That's quite a mouthful of words. I'll turn this one over to Chief Levon for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'll deliver the report as well. I do have Director of Corporate Facility Management, McPhillips, here as well if there's more detailed questions, but it's a relatively simple report with a high price tag. Essentially, we've had this liner for the Lazy River in service since inception, so a little over 13 years. The initial expected useful life was around 10. We have been doing annual repairs during the shutdown to try and extend the life of it, as there was still economic value in it. We were expecting to be able to do the same for this shutdown, however, once we had our contractor in there, it was looking as though it was going to be sustainable. substantially more expensive. Currently estimated at over $200,000 to do the repairs, and they would only warranty them to the end of this year, so it just did not appear to make financial sense to do so. The new liner, if approved, would have at least a 15-year warranty. So administration is recommending that council amend the 2025 capital budget to include $1 million in funding from the Facility Renewal Reserve for replacement of the East Link Center Lazy River Liner. And with that, we'll take any questions.
All right, thanks for the introduction. Open up to council with questions, recognizing Counselor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Chief Glavine, when the East Link Center was constructed, I know that the pool liners came from Italy. I don't know if the Lazy River liner did. Is this still the case, or do we have a easier supply route and a more stable product?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. It is the same manufacturer, so for the design of the Lazy River, I believe we just, through discussions with facilities and the installer, that it would be likely more effective to use the same liner as the one that would, it was designed to have. So it would be coming from Italy. That is partially the issue with the lead time for it. However, by doing this, we also will get a longer warranty. Initially, it was 10 years. They're willing to do a 15-year warranty on this product.
Thank you. Counselor Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I've only built one pool in, in my life, and, but with that, we didn't use a liner. It was concrete and then a finishing product called Pebble Tech. So there was no liner, and I think this Pebble Tech is, was applied with a trowel and, and put on. I'm just kind of curious, is the liner there because there could be micro cracks within the Lazy River itself, and the liner prevents water seepage that way? Just kind of curious as to potentially different kind of products.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'm going to invite Director Phillips up to answer that one.
Good evening, Mr. Phillips. Your microphone is on whenever you're ready.
Thank you through, through the mayor. So, no, the, the installation was not an entire concrete basin as a normal pool would be. Murtha, pardon me. Murtha, as a global installer of pool systems, have more of a green outlook, and so we don't have a standard concrete full basin. The base is concrete, but the walls are not. They are actually a quarter-inch stainless steel, and so that is why we don't have as much materials in that basin, but also why we aren't needing to stick with Murtha.
Okay, yeah, that answers my question. Thank you.
Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I would also suspect maybe turbulence probably has a bit of an issue with that, that pebble stuff too, with the Lazy River. But my question is actually for Director, or sorry, Chief Glavine. In regards, it says in our report, it would be 50 to 75 days for, for the shipping, so the lead time for that. So that's approximately two and a half months, and then install. So what, what would council say to the public for how long the Lazy River will be closed for?
Chief Glavine.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. It looks, as long as it doesn't exceed that shipping estimate, it would be done by the end of December, but if it's on the shorter end of that shipping estimate, we're hoping end of November, early December, but it, a lot of it depends on the transit time.
Okay, and just in regards to the transit, $1 million. Years ago, we talked about a movable floor at the East Link Center. It was $1 million for that floor, and then it ended up doubling because of the shipping costs from Italy. What is the shipping cost on, on this? Do we, do we know?
Chief Glavine.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'll turn it over to Mr. Phillips if he knows off the top of his head.
I, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I can provide it.
Okay, that's great. I think most importantly is letting the public know that the East Link Center Lazy River is likely out of service for good reason until probably January 1st. I don't know, maybe council of the day can, and administration can find a way to celebrate the reopening of that in some cool way that'll get all the public using it again. But thanks for your work on this. I know with facilities, we always have big expenses to keep it up to date, and that's to ensure that we don't have to demolish it and spend hundreds of millions of dollars more. So really appreciate the work and care that's gone into this, and I look forward to the work getting done.
I just had a question before I go to those in the queue. Chief Glavine, can you tell me, compared to other facilities, is this a normal life expectancy? Did, did this last as long as we thought it should, and how long do we expect the next one to last? Is it something we need to plan on every 15 years? What's that look like?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. So initially, it was warranted for 10. I think we were probably planning for somewhere in that 10 to 15 years. The sister facility to this would be Fort McMurray. They have the same system in place for the same duration. They replaced theirs last year. So in that 10 to 15-year window, I'm, I would expect if they're willing to warranty a product for 15 years, the next time, we'd probably be expecting that 15 to 20-year window for life expectancy, assuming we'll be doing some of those basic repairs if we are able to, to extend the life of it.
Perfect, thanks for that. Counselor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Mr. Phillips, I'm just curious, does this come with a whole new wave flowing part, or is that equipment stand place?
Through the mayor, yeah. The, the jet system, the propulsion system is all the same. What's going to be replaced is the floor liner itself, the walls with a new stainless or additional liner, so the stainless steel liner that's there right now, it's not that it's failing, but it's, it's in, it's in rough shape because of the, the liner that was attached to it that was failing. So this new system will have a new stainless with a PVC product applied to it over top. So we'll basically have like a double basin, but you know, that double basin will only be a half an inch wide, but it'll be, it'll be a new liner system.
Okay.
The propulsion system will be what's existing.
Okay, and what's the shape of that propulsion system itself? Is that in good condition? Do you expect?
In very good condition. Mechanically, it's in very good condition.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm going to go back to a couple more questions about Murtha. One is, I know that when the building was built, they sent a team of people to do those installations. Are, are they doing the same now, or do we have the available expertise here to make the installation?
Through the mayor, so we will be using local contractors for the demolition portion. They will be advised by the Murtha-approved representatives. There are very few of them around the world. We do have one in Canada that actually works all around the world on their systems, so they will be advising a local team on the demolition portion. That will speed up the timeframe. They're, they're currently doing other jobs at the moment. As long as the materials are here on time, that team will come to do the installation. They are one of the only approved in Canada, and Murtha themselves, so their Canadian representative will also be here over the course of the installation.
Thank you. The other question I have is, the other pool tanks, I believe, are the same technology. How are they holding up, and can we expect a price tag with those in the future?
Yeah, through the mayor, they're holding up much better as far as the entire tank system. It's just because of the design of the Lazy River, we're forcing water through it, so imagine if you've got something sitting and it's not moving, it's going to last a lot longer than something that is actually having that, that water propulsion system pushed through it.
Okay, thank you.
General life expectancy of the other areas of the pool then, that don't have the moving water?
The ones that don't have the moving water, so we did the 25-meter pool last year. The, the liner basin itself, the stainless was fine. It was just the liner itself, and that only needed repairs just because over the, the last 12 years of the, the old style of tot docks that we were using for programming. As those were being taken in and out, it takes its toll, but the, the basin liner itself was fine, so I would expect that we would get, you know, probably at least a 20-year lifespan out of a liner.
So the 50-meter pool, I'm just curious, when the 50-meter pool liner needs to be replaced, it will have significant impact on our swim teams, and so the timing of that, I'm just curious.
And at this time, I, I couldn't give you a timeframe, but I can certainly do that. I can speak with Murtha, but we don't foresee any, any issues at the moment.
Great, thanks for that. Counselor Platt.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Not necessarily related to the river, but as we're doing a major renovation, there are major demolition, I guess, we've had line of sight issues, I believe, with some of the dinosaurs and some of the things around that Lazy River at times. Has there been any thought about possibly looking at that at the same time as we're doing this? I know it's a major capital cost, but just wondering if it's, if it's been looked at. I thought we had reports that we had issues with some sight, sightlines and some safety at times with those in there.
Ms. Phillips.
I could speak to that through the mayor. Good question. That would probably pertain more to the programming side of things, but I can say from a renovation perspective, none of the theming will be changed throughout this renovation of the liner itself. We, we wouldn't be impacting what's going to be new versus what's there now.
Okay, so if, if there was a future change made above surface to any of the towel work or the dinosaurs or the?
Correct.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't change.
That, that would be the time to do it then, but now it's not something that we would be, that would, wouldn't be changing.
Okay, no, thanks for that.
Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much. When I went on the tour, the gentleman that put on the tour for us, he suggested that there could be eight people from Murfa from all over North America coming in and helping do the install to get it done much quicker. So that was one of the things he stated. And the other thing is the dinosaurs that are out there, some of the colors are starting to fade, and that's something that we should look into in the future. So just given what I was told. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Counselor O'Connor.
If you're ready to do business, Madam?
Go for it.
Thank you. I'd like to move council amend the 2025 capital budget to include $1 million in funding from the Facility Renewal Reserve for the replacement of the East Link Center Lazy River Liner. Say that three times.
Thanks for that. That motion is in order, recognizing Counselor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, I'll be voting in favor of this. I mean, we really don't have an option, but also I don't think this is a bad news story. What, what happened was, this was an asset that was meant to have 10 years of life, and we, but it's also, as we're seeing, an expensive asset to replace, so we ran it as long as it could possibly run, and the consequence of that is you don't get to plan when things break down when you run them as long as possible, but I do think that is the fiscally prudent way to do something like this where the, the consequence of failure and being surprised, oh, it needs to be replaced now, is it's closed for a couple of months. It's not a safety thing, it's not a huge new expense we'd have had anyways. So for me, I think that it's, I'm really glad that we got as much useful life as we could possibly get of that old liner, and I'm looking forward to this, I'm looking forward to this, this replacement. And also, I'd highlight that this is why we have a Facility Renewal Reserve. We know that we've got expensive assets that eventually are going to need large work, and so we save up money to be able to pay for those assets so that we don't have to go to the taxpayers and say, hey, we need a million dollars in more tax money. That's why we do prudent planning, and we put money away, and I'm really looking forward to hearing where the next council goes with conversation about that reserve and make sure it's adequate for future needs, but that's exactly why we have a reserve like this. So because of the planning we do, it's an easy thing for me to support.
For that, Counselor Thiessen.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Just to add on to Counselor Bressi's point, this old liner had a 10-year warranty, so we actually got four years extra out of what, what we could have gotten out of it. Of course, if it would have failed in that 10 years, it would have all been covered, but our, our men did a great job in ensuring that that was taken care of and.